Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting the Temecula City Council to order. Gina Wingfield, is that you back there playing that beautiful music? Thank you, it really was beautiful. We don't normally get started late, but we're getting started five minutes late just because we were held over in our closed executive session, but here we are, so please accept our apology. It's always good to start a meeting with an invocation, so at this point I'm going to call Reverend Andrew J. Lesko of St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church to come on up and give us an invocation. And then remain standing where Councilmember Ron, would you give us the flag salute? Thanks, please stand.
Let us pray. O heavenly King, the Comforter and Spirit of Truth, who are present everywhere and fill us all things, we thank you for all the benefits, both seen and unseen, that you have bestowed upon us and upon our city. Grant peace, O Lord, to our mayor, city council members, and all civil authorities. Allow them to govern in peace, so that we too may live calm and serene lives in all piety and virtue. Furthermore, we ask that as we begin this meeting, you will grant us your wisdom, strength, patience, and understanding, so that whatever we may accomplish in the course of this meeting will be beneficial to us, the city of Temecula, and to the glory of your name. Amen.
Okay, please face the flag, place your hand over your heart, and join with me. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, you may be seated. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Comarchero is absent. Councilmember Edwards? Here. Councilmember McCracken?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Mayor Nigard?
I am here. Well, we have some presentations and proclamations today. The first one I'd like to do involves Mercedes-Benz of Temecula. I see Anthony Chandler here. Come on up, Anthony. Up to the podium there. Good to see you this evening.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to read our proclamation, and then I'd like to hear from you. City of Temecula Certificate of Recognition Presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Temecula to Mercedes-Benz of Temecula. Mercedes-Benz of Temecula recently earned the Mercedes-Benz Best of the Best Dealer Recognition Award for Outstanding Performance in 2015. The dealership ranked among the top 15 percent of all Mercedes-Benz dealers across the country. Mercedes-Benz of Temecula was presented the award as recognition of success as an independent entrepreneur that consistently achieves excellence in new vehicle sales, auto maintenance, and repair, service, parts, and accessory sales, management and leadership, as well as customer service and satisfaction. We congratulate Mercedes-Benz of Temecula on receiving this prestigious award, and we appreciate their commitment to providing outstanding customer support and superior quality luxury vehicles to our community. Signed by me, but endorsed by the entire city council. Congratulations to you, that's quite the award.
Amazing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So tell us a little bit about it. What's it take to get that?
City staff, council members, Mr. Mayor, I wish I could take all the credit, I really do.
Thank you, Marianne.
Told you so.
To be frank, we were a little blown away by the award. We really appreciate being recognized here tonight. We feel a big part of the community, and we feel that a big part of our success here has been thanks to the community, and very much so thanks to the city of Temecula. We won this award, and we were the only Mercedes-Benz dealership in history to ever win it first year of operation, so that's never been done before. The president of Mercedes-Benz, current president, put in writing that we are the most successful Mercedes-Benz startup in the history of Mercedes-Benz, and according to Mercedes-Benz, they invented the car, so it's quite a long time.
Told you so.
You did, you did, and you were entirely correct. But you know what? When I say we can't take credit for all of it, the amount of support we get from the citizens of Temecula is unbelievable. You know, and it really leads into something else I'd like to talk to everyone about it tonight. You know, people walk into our dealership and say that they want to buy a car from Mercedes-Benz of Temecula because they want to support us, and want to support the city and the tax base. And that's, I've never heard of that in car dealerships ever before. In Newport Beach, where I worked for 21 years at the biggest Mercedes-Benz dealership in the world, they're the biggest taxpayer in Newport Beach, which when you think that that's where some pretty big, you know, businesses like PIMCO and the rest of it are, is a big deal. And yet, when they want to change a window, the city of Newport Beach, not less enlightened, you know, six the Coastal Commission on them. It's really different, guys, and it's really special here. What you've created and what you've done in Temecula is very, very special because of what you've achieved and the people you've brought here and the infrastructure, and the fact that people walking down the street actually say good morning to you. You know, we lived in Laguna Beach for 19 years, and I thought that was a great place. Laguna Beach has got nothing on Temecula.
Thank you. Well, ever since Garth and the gang arrived here in Temecula, you've been nothing but just community participants, and so we appreciate it as well, and again, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're very welcome.
That's awesome.
Our next certificate of appreciation goes out to the Chaparral High School Platinum Sound and Emerald Guard. Do we have Stephanie Rittenhouse here? Stephanie, are you here? Come on down. Bring everybody down with you. Anybody you want to come on down, come on down. Well, who said not me? That means you. Now you have to come on down. Come on down. Get everybody down here. Hi there. Hi there, I have a proclamation I'm going to read. City of Temecula Certificate Appreciation Presented on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Temecula to Chaparral High School Platinum Sound and Emerald Guard. We would like to take this opportunity to express our sincere appreciation for sharing your talent and providing entertainment at the Citywide Police Appreciation Blue Ribbon Campaign Event on September 17, 2016, and for performing at various community events. Signed by yours truly, endorsed by this entire city council. I have to tell you, that was a very special presentation you did on that day, and your performance set the tone for the whole event. So congratulations to you, and we can't thank you enough.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's picture time to you guys, so get your cameras out.
I'll take one. There's no, don't tell me there's not a teenager up here.
Oh, I got one.
Thank you so much, guys.
All right, here we go. What are we doing? I'm going to step back here, you're going to turn around and face me this way with my illustrious colleagues behind, and your giant picture up on the giant screen, and I'll get it all, so just. I'm not in the front, you're funny. Oh, you're going to have to be closer than that. And I'm going to show you today, so move in, move in, move in. Okay, councilmembers, sorry. Mr. Mayor, I can see you. And everybody says?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, one more. I want to get back, I want to get the next screen. Okay, it's not revering back to camera, check out, hang on. I push the button, I got the blue arrow down in the corner. Thank you. This isn't the phone that explodes in your pocket. Ah, here we go, ready? And now this time you're saying? Tea. Okay, I think that one's good.
All right. Thank you, Chaparral Platinum Band, excellent job. Now, I'm going to keep Mayor Protem Edwards hopping this evening. Something we're extra specially proud to always do is to present our young men with their Eagle Scout Award of Recognition, and tonight we have two. Is Brandon Beltran and Sam Holloway here? Gentlemen, are you here? Come on down. Both of you are of Troop 334, huh?
Yeah.
So Troop 334 is kicking out some Eagle Scouts, huh? That's pretty awesome. You guys got an awesome troop?
Yeah, yeah, they're great.
All right, excellent. Well, I have a certificate I'm going to read, I'm going to read it once because it's pretty much similar for the both of you, and then I want to hear, the council wants to hear about your individual service projects as well. And Mayor Protem Edwards has something special for you as well. So, City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. The City Council of the City of Temecula commends the outstanding achievement of Brandon Beltran and Sam Holloway of Troop 334. We congratulate Sam and Brandon for their achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of you both for your accomplishment, and wish you both continued success in your promising and bright future. And that's signed by me, but endorsed by the entire city council, and I can assure you the entire city of Temecula, because we love our Eagle Scouts. Mayor Protem, would you go down and present those? And she has a little special gift that is quite unusual she's going to present to you In the meantime, why don't you, while she's coming down, why don't you tell us about your service projects?
Sure. Well, um-
Hold that microphone right down to you there.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, cool. Well, my service project was pretty straightforward. I just went around my school and looked around and tried to see what needed some fixing, and so I found this really rusty, old, kind of like crippled, storage bin we have sitting by one of our baseball fields, and it really stood out, and kind of like, we're always trying to improve things at Great Oak. We both go there. Oh, well, I went there, I graduated. But anyways, so I just decided to take the rust patches off, fix it up, painted it, gave it a school design, and that was pretty much it.
Excellent.
For my project, I just think that was pretty near and dear to my heart, because I'm really into family history and genealogy. So I went to the Temecula Public Cemetery and actually photographed and transcribed the information from all the graves, and entered it into an online database, so it's searchable on the web. And so people are able to search those records now and use them from all around the world to find deceased relatives, so.
Two awesome projects. Excellent job, young men. Mayor Protem Edwards, you have something for them.
I do. In addition to your beautiful certificates signed by the mayor, and congratulations from me and the entire city council, and Councilmember Comarchero, who couldn't be here tonight, was involved in Boy Scouts with his boys. So the city of Temecula actually commissioned a special pin just for Eagle Scouts, and so it's the City of Temecula Eagle Scout Pin. And there's nothing like it, so keep it as a keepsake, and it will remind you when you become mature and very successful in life to come back and visit us, and even better, come back and share your talents and your skills with us.
Absolutely.
The place that loved you and helped to raise you.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, families, are you out there? It's picture time. Come on down, are your families out there?
I can take family pictures, too, families and the-
You guys do separately, together, take all the pictures you want.
They're fine, we're fine.
Ready then? There, guys, too much, trying to get the screen. And you're saying?
Please.
Ah, let's do one more, just in case.
Now, I noticed we have a group of scouts in the back. Are you guys just visiting?
Yeah.
All right, so good to have you, glad you're here. If you have any questions afterwards, we'll be around to answer them, but glad to see, always glad to have scouts in the chambers. Now, I know a lot of our government students are also in the audience, so where are my Pumas tonight? Pumas, okay. You're kind of quiet, Pumas, okay? Pumas? All right, a little, okay. All right, how about Wolf Pack?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I had one.
Golden Bears?
Eh.
Okay, I guess the Pumas, the Pumas rock tonight. All right, good job. A little quiet, but you know what? Sometimes when they're hunting, they're quiet, okay?
They're terrified you're going to, they're terrified you're going to call on them for something.
I don't know, okay, there you go. Okay, what?
Mesa Ranch.
What's that?
Mesa Ranch.
Okay, all right.
That's Marietta School.
You're here from Marietta? All right, all right, good to have you. Who's here from Mesa?
Oh my gosh.
All right, oh, uh-oh, okay. Uh-oh. Hey, good to have you, young folks. Glad you're here tonight.
Don't you want to ask them why?
You guys are here for a grade.
You're not, you're not here for a grade?
They are here, they had to get it for a grade.
You had to get it for a grade, okay, good, all right. All right, well, we're here, we're glad to have you. Did you want to come up and publicly speak? Okay, you could just sing that. All righty. All right, well, speaking of public speaking, this is the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we have six public comments.
Okay, that means I have to read the rules. The rules are boring, just kind of sit tight, I got to read them, I'll get through them real quick. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward, state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes on agenda items. Madam City Clerk, would you call the first speaker?
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Ms. Miller, to be followed by Rebecca Farnback.
Good evening to you, Ms. Miller.
Good evening, thanks and praise for the rain, nobody mentioned it. All right. Old Town Temecula should sell tickets for capacity to solve some of the traffic, and after that, park and satellite and shuttle. But why do you let all those cars go downtown every weekend and just make a slow GHG fill-up? Now, Temecula has the unique opportunity to contribute to the election of Andrew Marcel for 75th State Assembly District. We will be electing the first American native to the California State Assembly. He will be the most positive influence on the Assembly, and there should always be a representative from every tribe. And the positive action of removing 23-year incumbent Ken Calvert and voting for Tim Sheridan, a genuine candidate for representing the people, as he has attended one to four civic meetings almost every day for four years. He knows the people's needs. Temecula Planning Commission and City Council have come up with more spaces to build unneeded repetitive gas stations, park and ride in residential areas, hotels and 2,000 homes and apartments, and another hotel in Temecula, and if they solicit these actions, they don't need to be reelected. Temecula needs to break the stranglehold of conservatism and study better leadership before there is just one long stalled traffic implosion on the freeways. If you think it's easy to select from nine candidates, do not be discouraged. The forums are revealing, go to YouTube. Mr. McCracken said manage growth. Mr. Cooley said continue growth. Mr. Garcia worked for Marie Walton and Duncan Hunter, both need to be unelected. She has less than 5 percent positive environmental voting record, and so does Mr. Hunter. So I say his remark about too much traffic must be outweighed by building for profit, that's Mr. Garcia. So I say we have someone in James Stewart and Mr. McCracken. Repair the infrastructure already here if you know these tract housings, anyone elected. The tree roots, the open water sprinkler system boxes, some have been vandalized, some are just open. Why aren't you checking the streets? We have trash in the Santa Margarita River over by Winco. Why aren't you organizing young people to help direct others to pick it up? Maybe even some of the people that you are trying to get rid of, the homeless, well, they'd probably be willing to go down there. Some are not as bad as you think. These elected officials aren't maintaining what they have. Mr. Bradley is a part of the old machine of attracting more people for tax revenue, although he did hint at a wrong turn in the city's direction. You've got to stop selling land to developers, stop projects on the books or in progress, and organize to unseat Mr. Nigard.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rebecca Farnback, to be followed by Richard Beck.
Ms. Farnback, always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you so much. Mayor Nigard and my other friends on the council. I'm speaking tonight as president of the Temecula Valley Historical Society. I'm asking you to consider adopting the Mills Act for historic properties in Temecula. By the way, we have a group of supporters, and I'd just like them to raise their hands so you may see those who are in the audience who are here to support this. I'd like to make it clear that although I personally have been associated with certain historic properties in Temecula and have also developed friendships with other historic property owners, this is not about them or those particular places. What we as a society want to do is to implement the tax relief incentive to benefit all historic property owners in our city now and in the future. So it's setting forth something for the future. Of course, it may benefit some of the people who are present owners and presently in these properties. And you know, in our opinion, as a historical society, this leads to a better city, and it leads to increased civic pride. About three weeks ago, I did send each of you an email regarding the society's request for the city to consent to grant a Mills Act exclusion for the historic property owners. As you know from reading that, the Mills Act was put into effect by the California Legislature in 1976, and it gives local governments authority to grant tax relief to the owners of qualified historic properties, including owner occupied or income-producing properties. In exchange for this relief, the property owners agree to maintain the properties in accordance with specific historic preservation standards and conditions. The overall intent of the legislation is to provide an economic incentive for owners to preserve and maintain the community's historic resources. In February of 1994, the city of Temecula adopted the Old Town Specific Plan, which designated certain properties as a local historic register. This has been amended a couple of times, but it still stands as a living and a working document. Our historical society believes it is now time for the city of Temecula to take the next step to protect and preserve its historic assets, which would be to enact an ordinance to create the framework to grant Mills Act benefits to qualified historic properties in our city. Since some of the historic sites listed in the 1994 list are no longer in existence, and others would not qualify, and since some property owners would not initiate the paperwork to apply, we believe that it would only have a small financial impact upon the city revenue.
Ms. Farnback, your time is up, and that would probably be a good time to end it, but I will say this, we got your email, and I believe staff is actually doing the research on that, is it, aren't you, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've asked the planning department to do that analysis, and we'll hopefully have something done shortly and presented back to the council.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity to meet with you face to face, too.
You're very welcome, and again, commending you on your historical preservation efforts, you and all your team. Somebody's got to do it, and you guys stepped up and did, so thank you.
So much.
And the old Veil Ranch, or the old Wolf Store looks, it's amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Richard Beck, to be followed by Paul Runkel.
Mr. Beck, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and I see a lot of the staff that we've worked with. Our family is the family that was involved in purchasing, restoring, preserving, and opening the Hotel Temecula. We've been in the Temecula Valley for decades, and we really, it's a lot of responsibility there, but it's also a labor of love, and it's been a lot of pleasure. The reviews from people who stay, and these are people that are coming from around the world, are tops. They absolutely are loving the hotel, loving the city of Temecula, loving the history. And what I'd like to ask is, the Mills Act directly would have benefit for the hotel. Currently, our property taxes are approximately $20,000 a year. Of that, the city of Temecula receives about 8 percent. Under the Mills Act, typically tax savings, you know, range from 30 to 70 percent, so literally, the city would be talking about maybe, you know, $1,500, $1,600 or less, well, actually, you know, it could be $500, $600, $700. In our first nine months being open, we've actually generated almost $3,000 in revenue under the city's hotel tax. So there are benefits to having the hotel up and operating, as well as the fact that all of our guests are eating in local restaurants, shopping in local businesses, and so, from that standpoint, I would certainly encourage the council to consider adopting it. Again, it would be a great help to the hotel. I'd be happy to share with planning, I've put together a list of all of the properties that are listed on the historic register, and even threw in a couple of more that are potentially worthy of it, and in my analysis, the sum total is less than $10,000 fiscal impact, if every business that was in historic property qualified. And the odds are, it would be much less than that, so you're literally talking maybe $5,000, $6,000 impact in a year.
Thank you. Are you, are you through?
I'm done, yes.
Couple of things, if you have that, do you have that list tonight?
Yes.
If you would give it to the city clerk, she'll make sure the planning department gets it, and thank you for preparing it. One other thing I want to thank you for is not many people key into the fact that we get a very small percentage of property tax that is paid. A lot of people think every bit of property tax they pay, even on their homes, goes to the city. A tremendously small amount, between 8 and 10 percent. So I really appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Paul Runkel, to be followed by Anthony Chandler.
Mr. Runkel, always a pleasure to see you.
Always a pleasure. I want to tell you, I want to compliment the, both the council and the staff. I'm going to raise one issue that I'm not quite in support of, that you're in support of, but, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Comarchero is in here. I took a look at the children's museum for the first time. My kids are kind of at that age where they just missed it. I was blown away by how nice it is, and I even think the special, you know, the park, the water park over there is beautiful, so I think you're all doing a great job. But the one thing I wanted to talk about was Measure S that's on the ballot. Temecula is a wealthy city, I mean, we have the fifth highest per capita sales tax of the 52 cities in the inland empire. We're actually twice the per capita sales tax in, of Marietta. And I think you do a good job, but in Measure S, it's a 1 percent sales tax increase, which is a $23 million tax increase to the citizens of the valley, not only just of Temecula. And I like my city council getting out in front of issues, and I watched online when the city manager made the case about how the budget's taxed and how, you know, services are going up, but they talked about a five-year projection of a $4.5 million gap five years out. We're talking about a $23 million tax increase each year. By the time we get there, I mean, that's over, you know, that's over $80 million additional, it's a 35 percent increase in the general fund budget, and I just, I just think as a citizen who, I want, we have to pay for great services- I want, we have to pay for great services, and I love this city, I've lived here for 20 years, and I participate in the city, but I just don't feel like the council has or the city has made the case for that big of an increase. And I was just curious, was a quarter, I mean, a quarter percent increase is a $6 million tax increase, a half a percent. You guys have a lot of political capital in the city, and the residents love you, and they love the people that serve the city. But it almost seems to me like this increase was because we thought we could get a percent, rather than maybe a half a percent would have been more than enough. And if that was the reason, that's not, just because you can, isn't the reason why. So I, right now, you know, I usually don't vote until the last minute because I always want to look at all the issues as they come up. And if the measure does pass, as it will, I just hope there will be transparency out there with what you're going to be doing, because I can imagine two or three years from now, you're going to be sitting with $50 or $60 million in the bank, thinking about great projects to do, and hopefully they will be great projects, and maybe you won't be picking winners on the private side. You know, I sometimes worry about that. We've had some things in the past with regards to, you know, some executive compensation and a city manager that retired with over two years of time off. I don't know how that contract got through, but there've been very few things. But I just wonder about, you know.
With that, your time is up.
Yeah.
But don't go away for a second. A couple of things. You have us at a little bit of a disadvantage in two ways. The Brown Act doesn't enable us to really respond in a manner that I think everybody here would be itching to respond to, especially the city manager. And then also, the dynamics of a ballot measure preclude us from advocating for it as a city. Okay, we can, once it's up there, it's up there, but it doesn't preclude any individual council member on their own time. So we're at a double disadvantage to respond to you.
Right.
From the dais tonight. So if you don't get any answer, that's why. I will just, with the city attorney watching me to make sure I don't go afoul, I will just tell you this, back in 1997, the citizens passed a tax known as Measure C for parks.
Right.
And that was a $77 parcel tax. And for about 97, 2007, almost 15 years, we didn't, we didn't charge that whole tax. In fact, we supplemented it with our general fund. Now we're finding, as things have gone up over the years, one thing that we did not do was put an escalator in that tax. And now it's capped at 77, even though the services now are probably about $5 million more than we collect. That's just a little tidbit, and that's probably all I should say.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you're well within the city's informational permitted speech, but you may have, the city manager can probably contact Mr. Runkel.
There you go.
And provide some additional information.
Yet you're a very smart man, and a lot of people depend on what you say. I want to make sure you have the right information, and, you know, I'm not surprised that you said that you watched it on TV. I'm not surprised, not at all.
That was, that was, yeah, I'm surprised I did, but I did, so, okay.
So I, to the degree I could, I've answered your question, but I know city manager Aaron Adams or any one of us individually, in fact, you're welcome to call me later or what have you, tomorrow, what have you, and I'd love to talk to you about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, thanks. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Anthony Chandler, to be followed by our last speaker, Wayne Hall.
Mr. Chandler.
Back again.
Yes.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, the managers and the city staff, I just got to tell you that one of the reasons why I felt that compelled to come and talk about Measure S and the very small amount of increase in property tax is because I've seen what you've done with it. You've brought people like our business, Fletcher Jones, Mercedes-Benz to town. We've been beyond our wildest dreams, successful, beating San Diego, you know, huge dealership in business for 30 years last month. You know, we've been in business for two and a half years. It really speaks to the way you guys fiscally run this town. You know, Mr. Adams, Mr. Butler, I got nothing but the best things to say about you, from a personal and from a business point of view. And I really think you get what you pay for. You know, when you look at what we're going to get back in terms of services, in terms of quality of life, in terms of increase in property values, this is going to pay for itself time and time and time again, and I want to thank you for being up ahead of the curve with it, because that's smart planning, and that's not how it's being done at most of the other cities. I looked very carefully and in-depth at the presentation and all the notes I got at the last meeting I came to. You know, my math is, you know, is what it is. I'm the general manager of a Mercedes dealership. We're doing huge numbers, nothing like some of the other big businesses out there, but they're pretty huge numbers, and I got to be spot on with numbers. You know, unless there's some massive accounting fraud going on, you guys need the money, we should get you the money. I personally and Mercedes-Benz of Temecula will do anything we can to make sure that Measure S passes. And when I came here, I grew up in Zimbabwe, came here when I was 23 years old, and America was the greatest place in the world to me, and I wanted my children to be born here. And Mary Ann, you told me that my family would love living in Temecula, and I didn't really think about it because I kind of live in the car dealership, and I got to go back there again tonight. But you know what, my wife's already said to me, we're never leaving Temecula, and it's because you built a place that we should be proud of, and we want to pay for those services that are going to keep it great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The last speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Wayne Hall.
Mr. Hall, always a pleasure to see you, sir.
It's a pleasure being here in this Taj Mahal that I love so dearly. We've even got the Mission Inn in Riverside beat, yeah. I'm here for Proposition S. I'm 100% behind it. Something that doesn't come up, and I'm really surprised, and even the gentleman that talked about Proposition S forgot one thing. We're behind on police right now. We're not at 1 to 1,000. We're behind that. We're in the, we're in the black, not in the red, because the city has cut back. And here's the sad part, here's the part that burns my cookies. We've lost 52 city employees over the last couple of years. To keep us out of the red, in the black, we've lost people out of community services, public works. We've lost police. We haven't lost any firemen yet, thank God, but that's why I'm for it, because nobody mentions about the one quarter of the city employees were late, where their jobs disappeared. One quarter, that's 25% of the city personnel is gone. What about their lives? What about their love for this lovely town that we have, that these people maintain on a daily basis? Those 52 families that, well, they're not employed by the city anymore, and that's who I remember. That's the dirty little secret. We need Proposition S. Yes, a half, would a half percent do it? I don't know. But I know one thing, people are moving here because they love this place and not moving away. You don't see them move into Moreno Valley or Olsonor, much less Hemet. I am 100% behind Proposition S, and I want to see the city grow, and because I love this city. It's a great city, and I don't want to see just the Fourth of July parade cut. I don't want to see three firemen on an engine I like for. I want to see a full force of police and fire, and I want to get our treasured city employees back, because they're the ones that put the stuff on. And Mr. Hawkins, he's out there, but he's got people he doesn't have anymore. They're dwindling, they're going away. You know, you can't put on a great party if you don't have the staff. Well, all I can say is that I'm 100% behind it. I have faith, not blind faith, but I have moral faith in this city and the people who work in it. And we could use a few more helpers. Thank you.
Thank you. I said it when Mr. Runkel spoke, I'll say it with Wayne Hall. Appreciate you knowing what you're talking about. You're a very educated person, Wayne, and again, thank you for keying in and knowing all the issues. That's it for public comments. Okay, very good. Then we'll move to the portion of our meeting known as city council reports. I don't see anybody in the queue, so we'll move past city council reports to the consent calendar. I'm going to read the rules for the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one roll call vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless members of the city council request specific items removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item one, waive a reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve action minutes of October 11th. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, adopt ordinance 16-09, adding chapter 9.65, prohibition against certain forms of solicitation, lingering, and loitering on medians to the Temecula municipal code. This is the second reading. Five, approve a three-year Microsoft enterprise renewal agreement with Soft Choice Corporation for Microsoft software licenses. Six, receive temporary street closures for the 2016 Winterfest events. Seven, approve the plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for Sam Hicks Monument Park Playground Enhancement, PW 12-20. Eight, approve the plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for Old Town Sidewalks Improvement Project, PW 15-6. Nine, approve the Cooperative Work Agreement, CWA Extension Request, with Caltrans for the Highway Bridge Program Funding for Main Street Bridge over Murrieta Creek. This is a replacement, PW-03-05. Ten, approve amendment number one to an existing agreement and a new agreement with the Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC, for use of transportation uniform mitigation fee, regional community environmental transportation acceptability process, also known as CTAP, funding for the French Valley Parkway Interchange Phase One, project PW-07-04, and Phase Two, project PW-16-01. And the last item on consent is eleven, approve the agreement for consult services with TY Lin International for the French Valley Parkway Interchange Phase Two. I'm going to have a quick comment on that, but I will take a motion to move the consent.
Move approval.
Councilmember Ron.
Just before we get a second on that, Mr. City Attorney on item number nine, given my company's involvement in the development of that wonderful Main Street Bridge, I'm assuming I should recuse myself from vote on this. Okay, thank you.
Since it's not, and you're seconding it with your abstention, since it's not being pulled, he doesn't have to leave the dais, correct?
Correct.
And Councilmember Ron, I think it's important to note, I don't want to take the liberty, but you did work on that prior to you being on the city council, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clarity. And then I'm just going to have a quick comment on item 11. You know, we're starting the planning services for French Valley Parkway Two. That literally is a freeway from Diaz flying over the 15, the 215, all the way to Murrieta Hot Springs Road. So it's quite a big project, but we're embarking on it. So we have a motion by Mayor Potem Edwards, a second with the noted abstention by Councilmember Ron. Please cast your vote. And that passes 4-0, noted abstention, and Councilmember Camachero absent. At this time, I will recess the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Who am I handing it over to? Is that you, Mac?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Could I do another one? I'd like to convene the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam City Clerk, let the record reflect as such. Any public comments? Seeing none, I would just miss from the readings, to the consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consenting calendar for separate actions. We have one item, item number 12, approve the action minutes from October 11, 2016.
Move approval.
Have a move by.
Second.
Cast your votes. And that passes 4-0 with one man absent. Community Service Director, any report?
Yes, I do, Mr. Vice President. Halloween is just around the corner, but a friendly reminder that this Friday is the city of Temecula's annual family-friendly Halloween carnival. From 5:30 to 8:30 p.m., drop by Ronald Reagan Sports Park near the hockey rink, and for the price of a $5 wristband, kids enjoy unlimited games, party jumps, train rides, and tons of fun. And of course, there will be plenty of candy and costume, and a costume contest. So come dress as your favorite character, like Zack. Or which or goes for something else. Then on Saturday, October 29th, at the Temecula Amphitheater, the Temecula Valley U Symphony will present their Fall Festival, a celebration of music. This concert is from 7 o'clock to 8:30 p.m. and free to the public. And finally, reminder to mark your calendars for a patriotic salute to our veterans on Friday, November 11th, from 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock p.m. Under the stars, the Temecula Valley Symphony will once again perform an amazing concert right here on the steps of the Civic Center, in a salute to our nation's finest. So see you on Veterans Day, and that concludes my report.
All right, before the city manager report, one of my favorite events at that Halloween thing is the Halloween contest and the scream contest. So if you're new to Temecula, if you have family new to Temecula, you got, you can't miss this. I mean, the best costumes and the scream contests, it will blow your ears off.
The scream contest will blow your ears off.
Well, just for point of clarification, we had to eliminate the scream contest because the screaming typically took up the entire evening, so it's just the Halloween contest, but there will be screaming nonetheless, just not judged.
So not counting my screaming, right? Okay. Director, General Manager report?
Nothing tonight.
Good question.
Yes.
We're making accommodations for special needs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we always make accommodations for special needs. We had a separate event, and for this event, all of our staff is sensitive to all of our residents, and if someone identifies themselves as such, they will be brought to the head of the line, and we always are prepared.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
That's a great comment. This is one of the few cities I've been in where special needs, it doesn't matter what your situation is, you're very well included. One event I have to bring us up, staff blew me away with this one, at the Harveston Park, as I was Community Service Commissioner, I was walking around just meeting and greeting people, and I saw this table, it's about waist high, made out of fake grass, and had cannons and eggs and things on it, and I was kind of wondering, what is that about? Came back about half an hour later, and I saw about four or five special needs kids in wheelchairs going Easter egg hunting.
On the table.
On the table.
Oh, that's nice.
So that's the extent that this city goes to take care of special needs and make sure everybody's involved. So if you're new to Temecula, new family, and you have a special needs or your neighbor is, please bring him down. You'd be very welcome and very, very well entertained. Board of Directors reports, anyone?
Nope.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Move by Mayor, second by Mayor Potem, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, well adjourned.
All right, so at this time, I'm going to convene the Temecula Public Financing Authority meeting. Madam City Clerk, we're all here with the exception of Director Camachero. Do we have any public comments? All righty, let's see, nothing on the consent calendar or do, okay, yes, I see one item. Approve the action minutes of October 11th. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Making a motion by Mayor Potem Edwards, seconded by Director McCracken, please vote. And that passes 4-0, would want absent. TPFA Business Item 14, approve the issuance of special tax refunding bonds for Temecula Public Financing Authority, Community Facilities District Number 01-2, Harveston, and Community Facilities District Number 03-1, Crown Hill. May we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening. It froze.
Take your time.
Sorry about that.
No, take your time, don't worry.
Good evening, directors. At last week's board meeting, you heard a report from Assistant City Manager introducing the proposed refinancing of two community facility districts, or CFDs, to take advantage of the current interest rates and generate future savings for taxpayers. Tonight's agenda includes the authorizing documents necessary to issue special tax refunding bonds for the Temecula Public Financing Authority's Community Facilities Districts Number O-1-2, known as Harveston, and Community Facility District Number O3-1, known as Crown Hill. The Temecula Public Financing Authority, or TPFA, has a total of five CFDs, which were formed in order to finance public infrastructure, such as street improvement. formed in order to finance public infrastructure, such as street improvements, storm drainage, and park facilities throughout the city. The TPFA issues land-secured bonds for each CFD in order to generate funds needed for infrastructure. The bonds are not obligations of the city, rather the CFDs are authorized to levy special taxes on the properties within each district to repay their respective share of the bonded indebtedness and administration of the CFD. Each CFD is only allowed to levy special taxes on the land included within the boundaries of the respective district. In 2012, the TPFA issued refunding bonds for three of the CFDs, saving taxpayers between eight to 15% of their special taxes, depending on the district. In light of current low interest rates, the opportunity has again arisen to refinance Harveston and Crown Hill in order to generate taxpayer savings. While the actual savings will be determined at the time the bonds are sold, this table provides an estimate of the savings based on current interest rates. For the Crown Hill CFD, a total of $2,165,000 in bonds will be refunded, creating an estimated $190,000 in present value savings. Depending on whether the existing balance of $1 million in bond proceeds are utilized as part of the refinancing, taxpayers can expect to see an average annual savings between $25 if the million-dollar proceeds are not used, up to $115 if the proceeds are used. For Harveston CFD, a total of $13,670,000 bonds will be refunded, creating an estimated $1.2 million in present value savings. Homeowners will, on average, save an estimated $72 per year on their special tax levy. This equates to a savings between eight to 25% of their special tax, depending on the size of the home and the corresponding tax rate. In both CFDs, the bonds will retain their same respective expiration dates as the existing bonds. If tonight's resolutions and agreements are approved by the board, the next step in the process will be to obtain a credit rating for each of the bonds from Standard and Poor's. That's expected to occur within the next week. Next, the underwriter will price the 2016 refunding bonds in mid-November and target a closing date of early December. The bond proceeds net of issuance cost will be used to defuse the existing bonds at the next available call date of March 1st, 2017. And homeowners would expect to see their reduced special tax reflected in their 2017-18 tax bills, which will be sent out this time next year. Tonight, the board has requested to adopt two resolutions necessary to issue the 2016 refunding bonds, as well as approve the various agreements required as part of the bond issuance. We have both our special tax consultant and financial advisor in the audience tonight to assist with any technical questions. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and we're available for any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'd like to have Jen clarify for us. Jen, why are we just talking about Crown Hill and Harveston? Can you explain that for our viewers?
Sure. Of the five CFDs that we have, three were refinanced back in 2012. Typically, the CFDs have a 10-year lockout period where you cannot refinance, and at that time, the Harveston and Crown Hill were within that 10-year period. That has since expired, so now they are available for refinancing, and it all depends on the interest rate market, and right now it's favorable, so it is beneficial to refinance them at this time.
And what was the reason that this financing capacity was placed on these particular developments? And was it, you know, was it before there were any residents there, was it...
Correct, yeah. Typically, they're formed as the development is still vacant land, and it's money that's raised in order to build the infrastructure, streets and roads, sometimes sewers, sometimes parks, storm drainage, things like that, then the development occurs around that. So it's used to spur on development.
So when people purchase their homes, they know that this is included in the price of their...
Absolutely, it's part of...
Their tax assessment.
It's reflected on their tax bill.
Okay, and now, as the oversight, we are, have the ability to obviously refinance and save them taxpayers' money?
Correct, and we monitor it throughout the years, and when it is favorable and we can generate tax savings, we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, are there any requests to speak? Under this item. A little bit of discussion, please, Ms. Miller, sit down. Did Ms. Miller put in a speaker slip?
She did not, and she had made a comment about wanting to speak on an earlier item.
Okay, very good, thank you. A couple of comments. Ms. Miller, please.
She didn't let me speak. I mean, that's not on the agenda. If I asked, there would be another opportunity.
Okay, we want to continue our meeting. Yeah, very good, thank you. Okay, so I was a little distracted there, please forgive me. I mean, this is wonderful when you can give citizens a... You know what, I don't find a problem with it. Go ahead, did she fill out a speaker slip?
Ms. Miller, Ms. Miller, why don't you come on up and go ahead and provide your public comment?
Go ahead, I don't mind her speaking.
And Ms. Miller, you'll have five minutes.
But make sure you turn in a speaker slip before you leave, okay? Ms. Miller, okay?
What would we call this issue? The CDFs for Harveston? CFDs for...
Yeah, just put it down as item 14. On the Public Financing Authority, the City Local Market for you.
Public Financing.
All right.
Yes, why do you have this meeting if people can't comment on it and ask questions that you can't answer? But we'll get involved anyway. All right, you rang my bell when you said vacant land. A lot of these bond raisings is 10 years, and you already built massive houses on Crown Hill and Harveston. And now you found a postage stamp opening to put up more houses, and you're preparing for it, and you're not really telling us that? You know, Temecula's going to become the bypass capital of the world. Do you understand what's going on here, Temecula? You know, it's so glossy and so, you know, Hollywood here with these awards and these wonderful events they prepare, that you don't really look at what's going on and what's disappearing. Your history, you know, a field is history. The animals live there. They have the owls that eat the rats and the mice that will be coming in your house when they run away, when they cover more of this. So let's see if I can find, the bypass, they brag about this, that they're going to build an entire circle around Eastern Belt and a Western Belt. And they already passed the French Valley and built half of it, and then the state took half the money away, so they can't build the rest of it. But if they have Measure S, oh my gosh, they'll have the money to complete that? And what happens when you build a road? Houses on both sides! We can't handle any more of this! People hate coming here. They don't like the loud cars, the motorcycles, and it's going to look just like 405 and 101, that has locked areas in Los Angeles, and little puddles of houses and rooftops in the middle with roaring freeways all around it. Do we come out here to live like this? No! We came out here for the nature, and if you didn't, go back to those places you came from, but leave Temecula alone! So they're just in this long-term preparation for TA... Let's see, I got to get my game plan here. All right. They're the ones that wrote it. They're the ones, the employees, and let me say, the pensions that go on in these cities could pay for some of these employees that got laid off. You need to cut back on that, and the city managers. You know, if they don't like it, then you do their work. There are five of you, you do their work. All right, TPFA's. So not many of us know what that is, but I guess we'll be learning. And I thank the city for allowing this educational business here, but like I said, you know, we don't need expanding CDFs. And the thing that they do with that, they get more money than they need, then they give it back to the taxpayers as a gift, so that they'll vote for them, and we continue this stranglehold of more development. Don't you remember when there were cumulus clouds and nature was all over the place? It wasn't full of trash? And you weren't digging out the creek behind us in downtown? For God's sake! And you say that's not something you can do something about? Caltrans decided to do that? How much runoff are you planning? It's 40 feet deep! You know? What a make-work-busy project by Caltrans! So that's our tax dollars going for that. But really, we don't want Crown Hill and Harveston expanded. There's enough, enough traffic, there's lowered quality of education, you know, and I'm just praying you make some decisions that improve the quality of life by stabilizing the growth here, that it doesn't go anymore. Stop all the buildings. And you got the county that doesn't know what you're doing, and you don't know what the county's doing, and you're connecting all the roads so that houses are on both sides through the Clinton Keith Extension and the Whitewood Extension. When are you gonna stop? You know, and seriously, Chuck Washington and Shelley Milne are of the vote the same. So you can write Ms. Miller in as county supervisor, who is guaranteed no vote on any more development, and I'll put the projects out that have already been started.
With that, Ms. Miller, boy, your timing is excellent. Your time is up. The perfect timing. I assume there's no other people. Okay, got it, no other speakers, okay. Since I gave Ms. Miller that opportunity to speak in a late manner, I'll give it to anybody else who wants to turn into a speaker slip. We need to stay consistent. I don't see anybody that wants to, so we'll go ahead and move on. Let me just, you gave an excellent staff report, I'm just gonna sum it up, you asked some great questions. It's a loan, it's against the properties that are built, the interest rates have dropped, we're able to refinance it. By refinancing it, it cuts taxes for all the homeowners there, and they're gonna get anywhere between, what did we say, $25 and $125 tax break? The only thing I would ask is if, I think it's important, particularly with the holidays coming up, if we can send out a letter and let them know this is going to occur, maybe that letter can go out tomorrow or the next day. I just think it's important, even though it'll take place with the next year's tax rolls, as long as it's okay with my colleagues.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
Yeah, okay. And that's it, so with that, I'll move the item, with that, with those instructions.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mary Ann Edwards, a second by Councilmember McCracken, please cast your vote. And that passes four-zero, thank you. Any Directors' report for Financing Authority? Okay, any of our Board of Directors? I don't think so. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are all in favor, aye, we are adjourned. Okay, let's see here, we'll reconvene the city council meeting, we're almost done here for the evening. We have one business item, that's introduce an ordinance prohibiting the possession, distribution, and sale of synthetic drugs and declaring subsection to be a public nuisance, put on at my request. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, sir, Mayor Nigar. Councilmembers, the proposed ordinance you're considering this evening at the request of Mayor Nigar is very similar to a recently adopted Riverside County ordinance prohibiting the possession, distribution, and sale of synthetic drugs, commonly referred to as bath salts. That was brought forward by Supervisor Washington. As noted in the staff report, recreational use of psychoactive bath salts, psychoactive herbal incense, and similar products commonly referred to as synthetic drugs is documented to cause hallucinations and agitated state, psychosis, aggression, and even suicidal and homicidal thoughts, and their use possesses a serious threat to public health. An example of the dramatic effects these drugs was discussed at the county's consideration of their ordinance. They referenced an incident in Los Angeles Skid Roads neighborhood where 24 people were transported to local hospitals between August 19th and August 22nd due to using spice. At least one death during that timeframe is being investigated for a possible link to the synthetic drug. It was cited on that day, on one day within that time period, 12 paramedic ambulances and 75 firefighters were in the area due to the spice incident, thereby straining the City of LA's resources. The purpose and intent of the proposed ordinance is to provide the city with measures to address the dangers to the community posed by synthetic drugs that are not regulated by state or federal law, and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. An effective way to prevent and abate these concerns that exist as a result of the marketing, distribution, and sale of synthetic drugs in manners that brazenly seek to circumvent state and federal law is through the administrative civil and criminal enforcement procedures that are included in the city's municipal code. The cities of Harupa Valley, Ontario, Redlands, and Highland have similar ordinances in place today. The county with the adoption of their ordinance urged all Riverside counties to consider adopting such an ordinance. Myself, Chief Kubel, and the City Attorney are available to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, and I'll just add one thing to the staff report. My desire of putting this on was just to make our law consistent with the county's law, so we had a level of consistency. Thank you for that staff report. Are there any questions of staff? Seeing none, do we have any requests to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we do have three public speakers.
Thank you, would you call the first speaker?
Aaron Walker, to be followed by Michael Newcomb.
Can we switch Newcomb and Eric?
Sure.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Newcomb.
Good evening, Mayor Nigar, Councilmembers. Some of you may know me as a local attorney, I typically represent a lot of wineries and so forth, producers of psychoactive stimulants. I'm here in my capacity as counsel to the United Kratom Association. One of the things that struck me in Mr. Butler's comments is this ordinance is intended to be similar to the Riverside County ordinance. It does deviate in one particular area, which is, it also bans a product called Kratom. By show of hands, how many of you have ever heard of Kratom? Kratom is a product that is part of the coffee family, the coffee tree family. It is a, it's a product that currently the DEA was looking at banning, but recently took off that, the ban list, and, or it was a temporary ban that they were looking at so they could take public comment, because the problem is, there wasn't really any medical evidence, one way or the other, that said it's bad or good. We do know that it does have, it is effective as a pain reliever, as well as it is used to help drug abusers come off, you know, their drug addictions, instead of using some other types of products. So when we're up here opposing not the law per se, but one particular element of the law, which is ordinance 8.56.02, the definitions G subsection 1, little 2, which is to include Kratom as a synthetic drug, under the definition of a synthetic drug. We don't believe it should be. You know, I'll point out that tonight I had dinner at Gambling Cowboy with my clients, and I ate a steak. There's approximately, you know, by my eating that steak, that increased my chances of heart disease by 19.5%, my chances of cancer by 13%. I also had a martini, a real martini, not one of those vodka fake martinis, as well as a glass of wine. And that alcohol attributes 88,000 people died. Kratom, on the other hand, there's zero deaths per year attributable to Kratom. The CDC reports, yeah, maybe one was attributable to Kratom, and the proponents, or the anti-Kratom folks, they can cite 50 over the last eight years. And with almost all of those deaths, it generally is a mixture of different things, and we can't... can't say that Kratom is what did those people in. So what we're going to be doing, and I just wanna let you guys know, we're gonna be providing the city council with materials so it can make an informed decision. And what we ask is, you know, don't deviate from what you're trying to do, but bring your law in conformance with what the county of Riverside does, did. Don't go beyond like what you're trying to do here with Kratom. Those are my comments, and I, any questions?
No, I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Newcomb.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager, did we take the county ordinance verbatim? I think we did.
No, we, we took most of the county ordinance, and we added Kratom and Sativia as drugs that were, or as substances that would be part of that.
What was the?
And that was based on the testimony of certain law enforcement and health people in Riverside and San Bernardino County and other cities that have adopted this.
Got it.
Did you mean Salvia? I'm sorry.
Salvia, I'm sorry.
Salvia, thank you.
Got it.
And, you know, the information we received from Mr. Newcomb yesterday indicated that the Drug Enforcement Administration had taken it off of their temporary ban, but they had also concluded that it was an imminent hazard in late August. So they've just continued the discussion and the, the public comment period.
Okay.
But this is really up to the council. If you wish to take it off of the definition of this ordinance, you're free to do so. You can wait until the DEA decides whether to make it a Schedule I drug and consider it an imminent hazard. Or you could proceed and leave it here, and then amend this ordinance after the DEA has made its decision.
Got it. Thank you.
If they, if they classify it as a Schedule I drug, we don't really have anything to do with it at that point. That then becomes a federal issue and not a, not a local issue.
Got it.
But that's the background of why we added it to this, because of the testimony of certain law enforcement and health experts in, in other areas.
Very good. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Aaron Walker, to be followed by Ira Heck.
Mr. Walker, good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a consumer of the product called Kratom. I'm a Navy veteran, and I'm married to a teacher at a special education school. She also consumes the product called Kratom. I took some this evening. I am not hallucinating. I'm not running around. I'm not aggressive or crazy. This is something that I take because I have a back issue that I had when I was on deployment in the military. It's my opinion that there needs to be more education about this product, one way or the other. I know that, that there's been a, you guys wanna have a public safety, and you wanna protect the public, and I agree with that. I think it's a great thing. But it seems that over the past few years, people have started to lump natural products with bath salts and these synthetic products that are very bad. And I am all for regulating and controlling and banning those products. But I myself, as a citizen, a taxpayer, and a veteran, should be able to medicate myself or be able to mitigate the pain without having to take an opiate or something that just completely wrecks my body. This product works for me. And, and you can see right now, I'm completely functioning. I'm totally fine. I can walk and stand and jump and do everything I need to do. My wife takes it as well, and it's, it's very, very good for her. She, she takes it when she's, you know, having her period and stuff like that, and helps her out a lot. It's really awesome. I, I had a conversation with Mr. Butler this, this morning. I appreciate you calling me. Thank you very much. I have been directly involved with fighting, and I call it the fight, with, with the Drug Enforcement Agency. They, they announced their intention to ban it, and on that day, I spoke with senators and congressmen, and 51 members of, of the House of Representatives, and 11 senators wrote a letter to the DEA saying, hey, you need to stop. This is wrong. And lobbyist firms and lawyers in Washington DC provided ample evidence to the DEA stating that what they're doing, their decision to ban it, was completely without merit. And actually, when that letter was submitted, the DEA withdrew the ban. You know, I know you're saying that, that they still intend to ban, but that's, that's actually not, not true. They, they withdrew their intention to ban, and they opened a public comment period. But if they do decide to ban, they need to do what's called an eight-factor analysis, and that's just not gonna happen. The science is on our side. And, and I will provide that information to you, Mr. Butler. I have studies. I have anecdotal evidence from people out there. We have 140,000 signatures of people that signed a petition to the White House within 30 days because they didn't want this product banned. And if you Google right now Kratom, you'll see tons and tons of people, just like myself and my wife, who advocate for this product and advocate for it's unregulated, allowed to be able to purchase it and do what you want with it without it being Schedule I. Because if you guys make it Schedule I, I will have to go back to painkillers that the VA gives me, and I don't want to do that. So I thank you for allowing me to talk, and...
A quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Where do you get it?
You can purchase it online. You can purchase it at head shops. You can purchase it at health stores.
And what's it made out of? What is it?
Kratom is an all-natural substance. It's a, it's a tree that grows in Southeast Asia. It's called Mitragynus speciosa. And what you do is you, the tree grows naturally out there, and they take the tree, the leaf off the tree, they dry it, they powder it, and they sell it. That's it. It's not adulterated. It's not, it's not a synthetic, anything like that.
And it's used for what?
It's used for many different things. Mood stabilization, pain relief. People who have fibromyalgia take it. They find great relief from that. I know that my wife takes it when she's, she's, you know, when she's, she's got really bad periods. Sorry, is there? But she, she finds great relief from it. So it's been a godsend for me and my wife.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the final speaker is Ira, I think it's Hecht. Okay.
Mr. Heck, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilpersons. And I am a consultant with the United Kratom Association. I've been working with the area of Kratom for about a year and a half now. A year and a half. I could not have raised my hand and said I knew what Kratom was. I had to find out. Before I took the position, I actually found out about it and decided for myself that it was a legitimate substance. Some of what I'm gonna say is redundant to what Mr. Walker just said, Mr. Newcomb has presented to you, but let me give you the exact scoop on this. Prior to the end of August 2016, Kratom was perfectly legal for sale in Temecula and in the United States. There was some FDA concern about it, but it was based on false premises. As a result of that, it made it more difficult to import Kratom and use it here. Most of Kratom is sold after it's been encapsulated. And I think that makes people think that it's a drug. But it's kept, kept that way because it's a natural substance. It's dried, and it keeps it fresher. Some people also use it as, for leaves, as leaves in tea. So prior to the end of August, all of a sudden, the DEA comes out and says, we're going to make this, use our temporary scheduling authority, make it illegal for the next two years. And this is not appealable. This is not subject to judiciary view, allegedly. Needless to say, there was a gigantic mobilization in the industry through the United Kratom Association, the lead agency being the American Kratom Association, which we're related to, and also the Botanical Legal Defense Fund. As a result, as Mr., as Aaron just mentioned here, 140,000-plus people signed a petition to the White House, which requires a response. There was a march on Washington on September 13th, and 45 congressmen and subsequently about a dozen senators, including the chairman of the Senate Finance Committee, wrote letters to not only the DEA, but various other organizations in the government about this. And lo and behold, the DEA, for the first time in history, rescinded their notice of intent to ban it as of 30th, September 30th. They did that on the 28th. It was published on the federal register on the 6th. The legal situation now is Kratom is perfectly legal in the United States. There is no intent to ban it. Yes, the DEA is gonna take comments about it? That's exactly what we want. Because we feel that once that happens, and they go through everything, including many studies that have shown the benefits of Kratom, that not only the DEA will back off, but the FDA will say, okay, we're going to recognize this in what they call grass, generally recognized as safe. That will allow it to become more mainstream. It won't be sold so much in head shops. It'll be in health, health food stores. It'll be still online. So that's the situation now, and we intend to continue to go before the DEA with these studies that we have, with the information that we have. And it may take two years, because we feel that they now have said, there's not gonna be a temporary ban. There's no basis for an emergency prohibition. We feel that if the city, if Temecula goes and bans it, you'd be going too far. The rest of the ordinance is absolutely fine. We have no problems with it at all. Kratom is psychoactive, just like Mr. Newcomb stated, certain, a lot of other things are psychoactive. It is not, however, a synthetic drug. It is not a bath salt. It is merely a powder from leaves of a tree in the coffee family. Thank you. Appreciate the time and appreciate the listening to all three of us.
Absolutely.
We will present you tons of material. I hope we don't overburden you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kubel, did you wanna, Chief Kubel, did you wanna add anything to this at all, this discussion? Okay, you don't have to, just only if you wanted to. Okay, very good. No more speakers? I, I, okay, so we're down to council discussion. If, if I may take the liberty, you know what? For the time being, I, I just wanted to mimic the, the county's ordinance. If the county didn't do it, and more study needs to be done, I'm okay removing Kratom. I'm a big believer in holistic medicine. I have an autism, autistic son at home. We use holistic medicine all the time. Things that if we had to go with mainstream drugs would make things worse. So I get it. I don't know anything about Kratom, to be quite honest with you, and because I don't know about it, I'm hesitant to, to vote to ban it. So that's my two cents, but I definitely wanna hear what my colleagues have to say.
I, I have a comment. Just looking it up, as we were talking here, I've got information that says the DEA cited any deaths, there were 14 of the 15 alleged deaths that occurred in the last, what, four years from, two years, I guess, from 2014 to 16. And now the DEA has reported that those actually involved other drugs, which leaves one death questionable. Just as we did during our marijuana, our medical marijuana discussion, we really wrote that ordinance based on the fact that we wanted to do no harm to people who were using medical marijuana legitimately for the purpose of relieving pain. So I have a tendency, I agree with Mayor Nigar in that until we know more about this drug, and, and the fact that it's been taken off the list, I would suggest that we do that, knowing that we can come back and amend this at any time. Because if people are using it for legitimate uses, then, you know, I don't want to take that opportunity away from them. We don't wanna make criminals out of people who really aren't criminals. So I agree with Councilmember Nigar, and I would say, let's remove it from this itemized list at this time until, if and, if and when it comes back on the, on the DEA's list, and see what happens.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Ron.
Chief Kubel, related to Salvia, though, are there any issues related to that one? Could you enlighten us, please?
I actually have those flowers in my flower pots.
I don't.
Councilman Ron, concerning Salvia, I'm aware of one instance in Temecula, when I was a lieutenant here in 2008, probably. Students at one of the high schools took that substance, and several were sick, and medical personnel were called, and there was some kids suspended from the school because of it. But aside from that, I'm not aware of any local issues. I have been aware of the substance for quite some time, because I know it's something that, that people have taken and abused at times. But aside from that one instance here locally, I'm not aware of any other local.
Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we could just amend this to put, you know, these substances? Because my review of this, looking at the reports from the CDC, and in particular, there was a study done earlier this year. Warner et al., International Journal of Legal Medicine, is talking about the pharmacology and toxicology of Kratom, and in specific reference to the discussion, talking about its movement from a traditional sort of herbal remedy into a potential dangerous drug. And, and so while, you know, there are plenty of substances that, that get used for a variety of needs, and responsibly used, I might add, you know, this one is on a particular watch list. I think from 2010 to 2015, the incidence of, of reported issues to poison control centers across the US increased about tenfold. So it's an emerging issue. You know, and rightfully, I think, you know, there was a pause put on it from a federal perspective on, on sort of evaluating the substance. My thought here is that as, you know, these, these types of products, Salvia and Kratom in particular, emerge, maybe we just put them on sort of a watch list. We don't have them on a ban entirely, but we put them on a watch list, because it's not something that, you know, if we, if we pull it off the list altogether, we forget about it, right? And there may be a potential increase in, in use, or illicit or illegal use of the substances. And so my preference would be that we just sort of put it on this, this watch list within the ordinance, or, or elsewhere, if, if, you know, it's deemed appropriate by the city attorney. But, but just be able to keep track of this, because as it does move through the federal process, it's, it's important for us to sort of stay consistent with state and federal law, and, you know, and, and understand the issues. And if, if this is an issue with our, our youth, or, or, you know, other, you know, potential illicit uses within the community, something we should be aware of. And, you know, the, one of the issues I noticed in, in doing some, some sort of research on this as well, is that part of the reason why we don't have a whole lot of data on this as far as, you know, admissions to hospitals and all that, is because they typically don't test for it. It's not a, not a common substance, and not something that they're going to typically run on a tox screen, or at least a traditional tox screen. And so, so, you know, so it has its myriad of issues, and I'm not discounting the, the benefit that it plays to the, the folks who are currently using it, and, and using it responsibly. But, you know, as this emerges, it may become something we need to worry about, and so my preference, again, would just to see if we could place it on a watch list of sorts, and, and be able to revisit this ordinance at a future point, if this or other substances become more problematic, as deemed by, you know, federal review or other.
Mr. City Attorney, is Mr. Councilmember Ron's wishes doable?
Yes, I, I think we could delete both of those substances from the definition of synthetic drugs. And then on the staff level, we'll just calendar this to bring it back in, say, February, and we'll do more research and provide you with some of the ongoing research concerning both of those substances.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCracken?
Yes, I'm all for modifying the ordinance. This is one of those instances where we, as city leaders, have the opportunity to, you know, help our residents not feel like, you know, criminals by doing something that benefits them. But at the same time, like Councilmember Ron said, this is something that needs to be, you know, looked at and reviewed. So currently, it's kind of like in limbo, but it, it benefits our residents. So I'm all for having this substance monitored, and keeping an eye on it, and we should mimic the, the county's ordinance until otherwise we figure out something's going on different with it. So it may change either way. Just know that as your, as your leaders, we are, we have your best interests in heart. But at the same time, staff did a great job by putting it on the, on the ordinance to make us aware of it, the fact that it, you know, there were some issues with it, so...
Mr. Mayor, would I? Okay, no, we've, we've closed public comment portion, so no. No more comments, please. I would, we're done with public comments. Are you done, Councilmember McCracken? Any other comments here? Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead, based on the changes that we've adopted, to move that the city attorney introduce the ordinance with the changes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula, adding chapter 8.56, psychoactive bath salts, psychoactive herbal incense, and other synthetic drugs to the Temecula Municipal Code. And that includes the deletion of section 8.56.020GI, the definition of Salvia divinorum, and 8.56.020G1II, the definition of Kratom. And those two will be deleted from the definitions and not be part of this ordinance.
Very good. I'll take a second.
Second.
Press your button.
I don't have a button yet.
I catch you.
There we go.
Okay, cast your vote. And that passes four zero. Would Mr. Comerchero, absent, if you have any more information you want to get to the city clerk or to the city staff, please do so. Moving on to the next agenda item, let's see here. Commission reports. J.R. Richardson, Traffic Commission, you got anything tonight?
Nothing. Our next meeting is this Thursday.
Sounds good. Thank you. How about you, Mr. Gario, from the Planning Commission?
Our next meeting is on the 5th.
Thank you very much. And how about you, Mr. Schwank, from the Community Services Commission?
Nothing tonight from the Community Services Commission.
All right, very good. City manager, you have anything for us?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had two items in closed session, and there are no actions to report under the Brown Act from those two items.
Very good. Colleagues, if there's nothing for, further, take a motion to adjourn.
No, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.